Hello. There they are.
Evening.
We call to order the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Hit the roll call, please.
Chair John Dynan.
Here.
Vice Chair Robert Ball.
Here.
Commissioner John Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Melissa Hughes.
Here.
And Commissioner Steve Link.
Here.
And Commissioner Mallory Finnrich is absent.
Thank you, Janet. Conflict of interest: Any planning commissioner and member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Hearing none. Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. If we have any public comments at this time. Hearing none will move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote.
Move for approval of Item 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
Your vote?
Chair Dynan?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Duke?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 2.3. I will reclusive myself as I was not present.
Move for approval of 2.3.
I'll second that.
Chair Dynan abstains. Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Item 3.1, Public Hearing Presentation. Project Description: Architecture and Site Plan Review 03-2018. Parren Department File Number 18-0009 (closed parren). Hyphen David Church slash NNN Retail Development. Applicant. Chapel of Omkara Multicultural Society of USA Owner 5842 Roselle Avenue. APN 075-015-006. The project consists of the Architecture and Site Plan Review of a Dollar General Store, Commercial Building, Parking Lot, and Landscaping. The proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment and is categorically exempt under Article 19, Section 15332 (parren A hyphen E (closed parren), Class 32), Infield Development Projects. Staff have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening Commissioners, Chair, and Merry Christmas to all, including the audience. So you have before you the applicant which is, God, my mind just went blank. The applicant is here and they propose to construct a 9,100 square foot commercial general store. It's a Dollar General, along with parking lot improvements and landscaping, with the remainder portion of the lot at the rear being left undisturbed at this time. So here is the site location. The north to south street there you see is Roselle. The parcel is outlined in yellow. There are two partially developed parcels on either side of the subject parcel. There are some industrial buildings to the rear. And actually, through those parcels, at the very back of the property is a utility easement that comes to the back of the subject property and actually then makes a turn and goes into the neighborhood. Here's an aerial of the site from the west side of Roselle, looking towards the industrial building and the residential portions. So the general plan designation is industrial. That's all those blue areas you see there. It is surrounded on two sides, partially three sides. The zoning designation is light industrial M1. And the M1 in the city's code book, that's 153.121, it describes the uses that are permitted in the industrial district. And A suggests any use that is permitted in 153.106, which is the commercial industrial zone, is a permitted use in the zoning district. So if you then go to the commercial industrial zone, under 153.106, use is permitted, it specifically calls out retail uses under Section BB. So if you'd gone to the industrial part of the zoning code and didn't see retail, that's why. It bounces back to another code section where it is permitted use. Here is a site plan of the property. You can see to the left, there's Roselle Avenue. The applicant will not be doing much in the way of improvements to Roselle at this time because the city is working on a project to do the Roselle curb gutter and sidewalks and widening, and they want it all to match. So if the applicant put in their own right now, it may not match, and it would just be better for the city for them to donate the frontage so the city can actually do the project. Hence, you have a lot of landscaping at the front of the project, so the street can be widened and improvements made at a future time. But they did supply, you know, some drawings of how folks would enter and exit the project. There is a lot of traffic on Roselle at this time, so if this project is approved tonight, we will have the city's, well, he's a contractor, but he, Katie Anderson, and he assesses all of our traffic issues. And so he will take a look at that to ensure that there is safe exiting and entering to the property, and he'll be able to tell us exactly what improvements should be made until the city's larger project comes through. As you can see, there is plenty of parking at the front and side of the building. Directly behind the building is the stormwater detention pond there. And then, I had talked before about a part of the parcel that will not be developed at this time, and that's between the rear property line and the basin. That can be used in a future time should the building decide to expand, or one of the parcels next door is for sale and perhaps they want to buy that parcel and add it to theirs. So there's some flexibility that can be done with that parcel in the future. It would be surrounded by a redwood fence, and the weeds maintained and inaccessible to citizens or the homeless. These are some of the color elevations of the building. You see the storefront windows. There's a delineation between the roofing and the siding. It does look industrial, but it is industrial zoning, and there will be landscaping around the building and the property to soften up the industrial feel of the building. It is consistent with the general plan on many policies. The ones we pulled out involve traffic control devices. They will have, you know, signage to direct traffic on the property and stop signs, you know, to keep people from just driving right onto Roselle. They will be using quality materials expected to last many years. There will be pedestrian and bicycle access, and then bicycle security. There will be, there's a requirement for a small bicycle lockup. As you had mentioned at the beginning, in my introduction, or the project introduction, this does qualify for categorical exemption because it is under five acres. It is surrounded by developments, and there are other criteria where it does meet the infill development project criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and as I mentioned before, the applicant is here. I'm not sure if he would like to do a little presentation for you, or just be prepared to answer your questions.
Would you like to make a presentation, sir?
I don't have a formal presentation. I have a few ideas on specifically on the development. Again, happy to answer any questions, and, you know, here to address any issues that the commission could have.
Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. Any questions or statements from the public? Hearing none. Recommendation is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the item by roll call vote. Janet?
You need a motion.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you approve that? Is that you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Joan beat me.
Joan?
Joan beat me.
I know, shall we rewind just to make sure?
Have to arm wrestle.
Chair Dynan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
The project passes 5-0.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Now, there is a 10-day appeal period, but you're welcome at your own risk to start working on your building permit set. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Janet would be able to help you with that.
Sure. You guys have been great. I look forward to continuing on here, so.
Okay. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Item 4, Planning Manager Referrals. Item 4.
Planning, yeah, referrals, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Calling it something different than I thought. I apologize.
Okay. Item 4.1. Mobile Food Vendor Pilot Program. Guidelines for a six-month trial period to allow for temporary and administrative permits for mobile food vendors. Donna, do you have a presentation?
I do. Welcome again. So this mobile food vendor pilot idea came out of our workshop that we had early summer, where we had input from the public desiring to have access to some food trucks. Since this would involve amending both our municipal code as well as the downtown specific plan, staff thought it was a good idea to try a six-month trial period first to see how it works, if we like it, what we want to change, before we actually get in there and do an ordinance amendment. So the current regulations are that a vehicle can sell goods, but it can't stop for longer than 10 minutes. So, you know, can't really cook your tacos. You can buy pre-made sandwiches, but it's just not really a way of doing business that really works for the community. So the idea is to have a program with two parts in it. The first part is a temporary use permit that would look at mobile vendors such as this truck right here. And the thought was to do a six-month trial period. Since at our workshop, there was some interest expressed in having these trucks near parks, I talked with the Director of Parks and Recreation, and so we looked at one vehicle per park perimeter. She does not want them in the park unless there's an event or they have a special permit with her. So one consideration was a restroom. We would like this mobile vendor to choose a location that's hopefully within 200 feet of a restroom. They would be able to open from 11:00 a.m. to dusk, but the Director of Parks and Recreation mentioned that sometimes they have to close their restrooms if there's bad weather or something's going on. So we also say that if the restroom closes, then that starts a three-hour maximum time because you wouldn't have access to a restroom, you wouldn't have access to hand washing facilities for either the employees or some clients. So we feel that a three-hour maximum will work in this instance. So if a food vendor chooses a park that does not have a restroom, then the three-hour maximum would apply to them as well. But we can also foresee making room for another vendor. Say somebody comes in and they choose a park that has no restroom. They want to work from 11 o'clock, 12, 1 to 2 o'clock. Their three-hour shift, if they leave, we could have a permit for a second vendor to come in. So maybe you'd have tacos at lunchtime, and then a different vendor come in closer to the evening time. They would be required to have one trash can, and at the end of their three hours or their daily shift, it would be bagged up and left in a specified location for the park staff to come pick it up. They aren't allowed to have any structures, so no sun shades or picnic tables or anything like that. They're just supposed to remain mobile. They won't be able to sit there for a couple hours before their shift starts. They won't be able to hang out after their shift is over. They just come, sell their food, and leave. Only food may be sold. They won't be able to sell T-shirts or posters or anything like that, and they're only permitted one sign which must be on the vehicle. We will not allow vendors at the sports complex or Castleburg Park because they have snack bars that do fundraising for the Park and Rec Department, and we don't want that type of conflict. There will be no vendors at Rotary Park or Jacob Myers Park due to traffic flow and parking concerns on the edges of the park. There may be vendors in Jacob Myers Park, but that'll depend on the Parks and Rec Director. All vendors and locations shall be approved by the Director of Parks and Rec and the Community Development Director, where I am the Planning and Building Manager, but I also wear the Planning Director hat and the Community Development Director hat as well. So I would be sitting in on those reviews. So our focus will be safety. Is the location that the truck chooses a safe location? Is it disruptive to traffic flow? We want to make sure that doesn't happen. That was a prime consideration for Rotary Park and the school pickup queue that runs along there. And then the third one is parking. Can a couple vehicles safely park there? Maybe utilize the street parking, but maybe there's a parking lot inside the park too as well that would be able to access the trucks from there. So we wanted to make sure it's safe wherever they end up. So I just pulled this park out of the air, out of Google Earth to be exact, and just wanted to use it as an example. This is in Crossroads, and you can see in the middle right-hand side, there's a little pin there that says "food truck." And it's right in a knuckle and not exactly in front of a house, but more towards the knuckle itself. This might be an appropriate location because traffic will be able to get around it. There is street parking for the park itself that could be utilized by the food truck. The second part of the program, and this is, you know, a test, would be administrative use permit for stationary vendors. And we've all kind of seen those in Turlock and Modesto where you, you know, park, and they're there every single day. So these would be allowed on commercial and industrial zone private properties only. They would be prohibited from residential zone properties. There cannot be an existing non, let's see, there has to be an existing non-restaurant business location. So if someone wanted to park their food vehicle, say at Carl's Jr.'s, no, ain't going to happen. If they want to do it, say, at a property downtown and it's got maybe, I don't, I guess the...
Dollar General, can they park there?
Yeah, because there's no prepared food there. They could do a Dollar General. You're correct. It is an industrial property, and they do have a large parking lot with plenty of parking. So that would be one. I do have a photo farther in my presentation, and the name of the property is just devading me at this moment. So they need to get written permission by the business owner that they would be allowed there. It can only be open when the business is open, so the restroom can be used for the vendor employees as well as the customers. And all trucks, whether they're TUP or AUP, are prohibited to be open from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So if you had a use, like a 24-hour grocery store, and they want somebody in the parking lot, they would still have to close at 11:00 p.m. They could not stay open all night long. They may have structures, which could include tables and shade structures, and they must stay well-maintained. All structures need to be approved by the Community Development Director, and then, we're looking for the flow of pedestrian traffic, the flow of vehicle traffic, and the safety of where these structures are located. And they will have to be left in the same spot. We don't want them moved all over a parking lot. The vendor must also have use of the trash and recycling area of the existing business, so that should be part of the permission letter from the existing business owner. And then all vendors and locations on private property will be approved by the, or shall be approved by the Community Development Director. If you, a TUP vendor for special events may apply for non-consecutive dates on a permit. So say somebody wasn't able to get a parking location, but they wanted to come down to a farmer's market every Friday night for four weeks. We could issue a permit for those four specific dates. If there's an AUP vendor on private property and they want to apply for, you know, a TUP so they can come down to the farmer's market after they close up shop there, we'll allow that. The six-month trial begins the day the first TUP or AUP is approved and ends six months later. So if you have somebody that's kind of dilly-dallying and they come in after two months, they're only going to get to run four months if we've already issued a permit. Any letter that recurs on a regular basis, if they're operating outside normal hours, if they're selling non-food items, that's among the grounds for permit revocation. And we can just pull the permit, and they're done because this is a trial program, so we can see what works for us as a city and what doesn't. Okay, there's the stationary vendor location. It's a car wash on the edge of town. That would be a perfect location for one of these vendors. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. I think the one thing that I neglected to mention is that when the Director of Parks and Recreation and I spoke about this, we thought maybe for the temporary use permit, $100 fee, and then for the AUP at this point, $200 fee. That would allow us to cover staff hours and research and get them all set up. It may not remain that. If this becomes a permanent program, we'll take a look at what it really costs, the nuts and bolts of it, and may have a different cost then. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, is it, would it be possible for a vendor to hold both an AUP and a TUP?
Yes. So they could be an AUP on private property. Maybe they close down at 8 o'clock, they come down to the farmer's market and use their TUP for the night, and then they go back to their AUP the next day.
Okay. And with the TUP, can they, it's open-ended for them to operate within those timeframes, right? So if, like you said, 11 to 1, if they go to one park from 11 to 1, can they move to another park from 1 to 4?
I think for the trial period, I'm going to say no because we want people, as many people as possible to participate, to get a feel of how this is going to work. And so I think we'd like a different vendor at each park, just to get this rolling and see, you know, how it works.
Right, but like if we have a vendor at Park A, and he does his three hours, can he go to Park B and do another three hours? If there's activities at multiple parks, like say there's soccer games at multiple parks?
If it were to work out, as far as the locations in these parks are first come, first served, so I think we would let everybody come in and choose their first choice, and if there was something left, he could come back and do a second choice.
Okay. And then, one last question. Now that we're actually going to implement this kind of a program, will this impact the guy out in front of Sabre that does the meat for the troops?
Absolutely. He needs to have a permit like everybody else.
So now that, if we go forward with this, there will actually be one?
He would need to apply for an AUP for that location.
Any other questions?
I guess the only thing I was thinking was that for the temporary, I would almost say...
that's among the grounds for permit revocation. And we can just pull the permit and they're done because this is a trial program. So we can see what works for us as a city and what doesn't. Okay, there's the stationary vendor location. It's a car wash on the edge of town. That would be a perfect location for one of these vendors. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. I think the one thing that I neglected to mention is that when the Director of Parks and Recreation and I spoke about this, we thought maybe for the temporary use permit, a hundred dollar fee. And then for the AUP at this point, a $200 fee. That would allow us to cover staff hours and research and, and get them all set up. It may not remain that. If this becomes a permanent program, we'll take a look at what it really costs, the nuts and bolts of it, and have, may have a different cost then. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, is it, would it be possible for a vendor to, to hold both an AUP and a TUP?
Yes. So they could be an AUP on private property. Maybe they close down at 8 o'clock. They come down the farmer's market and use their TUP for the night, and then they go back to their AUP the next day.
Okay. And with the TUP, can they, it's open-ended for them to operate within those timeframes, right? So if, like you said, 11 to 1, if they go to one park from 11 to 1, can they move to another park from 1 to 4?
I think for the trial period, I'm, I'm going to say no because we want people, as many people as possible to participate, to get a feel of how this is going to work. And so I think we'd like a different vendor at each park, just to get this rolling and see, you know, how it works.
Right, but like, like if we have a vendor at Park A and he does his three hours, can he go to Park B and do another three hours? If there's activities at multiple parks, like say there's soccer games at multiple parks?
If it were to work out, as far as the, the locations of, in these parks are first come, first served. So I think we would let everybody come in and, and choose their first choice, and if there was something left, he could come back and, and do a second choice.
Okay. And then one last question. Now that we're actually going to implement this kind of a program, will this impact the, the guy out in front of Saymore that does the meat for the troops?
Absolutely. He needs to have a permit like everybody else.
So now that, if we go forward with this, there will actually be one?
He would need to apply for an AUP for that location.
Any other questions?
I guess the only thing I was thinking was that for the temporary, I would almost say whether, like, with the restroom or without the restroom, a three-hour limit would maybe be a good idea. I just, well, I also don't think that there's going to be food truck owners that would want to be out there more than three hours anyway because they generally work around lunch or dinner and not all day, but
Yeah. It'll be interesting to find out.
Yeah.
Did you feel you wanted to just limit it to the three hours or just, you're wondering how it'll work out?
Um, yeah, I mean, definitely like when we looked at the park and the one where it had it in the knuckle, as you called it. Um, for me, it was more like, I, I feel like with this, we're going to find some homeowners that would be, because it was pretty close. So I was just thinking like, would, would that annoy me if it was right there? So I think kind of limiting it, especially because like if they were there for lunch, then hopefully those people weren't home, but
Well, what's your favorite food? We'll get you that truck.
I know, right?
I wouldn't mind walking out front for a taco.
I mean, yeah. I, I guess it's also convenient because you can literally walk outside your house and get food, so.
Yeah, there's a possibility that the homeowners are gone during the day too and wouldn't even see the trucks till they got home later. And if it's dark, they're gone.
Yeah.
Your recommendation, Donna, is that we listen to the presentation, which we have, so it sounds like there's no action needed by the commission.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that the program that I'm proposing fits into what you feel came out of our workshop and would allow you to tweak it a little bit. I will be taking it to the City Council to give them a presentation and let them know what's going on and kind of give me a thumbs up, thumbs down.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
I think you nailed it on the head. I think it was very concise and it, it sounds, as, you know, as a resident, I'm excited about it.
Well, to be honest, I was pretty excited that Seres was doing it, and we kind of borrowed some of theirs.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Item five, planning commission comments. Any comments by the planning commissioners? Hearing none. Item six, county referral slash correspondence information. Item 6.1, parcel map. Planning received an early referral letter from Stanislaw County concerning a proposed parcel map for an agricultural property northeast of the city. I'm curious, what is this?
Yes. So like I said, or like it says, this property is a little bit north and a little bit east of the city. And it actually landed in an area that is a corridor or a buffer zone between the city of Riverbank and the city of Oakdale. About, I think it was 1991, the cities agreed that they never want to grow together, like you see in the Bay Area. They want to have some agricultural separation between the two. So it was agreed that this area would stay agricultural. And maybe in the future, the cities would work toward having some sort of, you know, bike path between the two cities that might run through this area or hiking trail, something in the future. And over the years, we've kept up this agreement between the two cities. So when I received this, I realized it was in the corridor and that the city would not be supportive of a property dividing up into five separate lots, presumably for homes. So I, I wrote a letter stating that, and I also sent it and a copy of our resolution between us and Oakdale. It's actually two resolutions. We have one and they have one. And I sent it to Oakdale and they responded that they wanted to reply as well. So the day after we sent in our information to the county, Oakdale did as well. We haven't heard anything back, so I'm not quite sure what's going on with the county yet, but I believe that they'll, you know, take our, our words under advisement.
So this is property outside the city limits?
It is outside the city limits, but within our sphere of influence. And within that corridor.
Thank you for the information.
Sure.
Item seven, staff comments. Item 7.1, city council meeting updates.
Okay, there is one project I would like to bring to your attention. And it has been through the planning commission already and was approved, and it was the small subdivision on 7th Street, the gated community. So, you know, we came through planning commission, got your approval, took it to city council for, so you approved the architectural review and you approved the tentative map. So then the rezone from a PD to a PD had to go to the city council. So I took that item to the city council and they agreed with you that it was a good project and they approved the rezone. And then as the city clerk prepared for the second reading of the ordinance, it was realized that there was a problem with the public noticing for the city council. So rather than getting farther down the road and maybe being challenged on that, we decided that we would renotice it and it will go back to the city council on January 8th for its first reading. And then presumably two weeks after that, if they still approve of the project, it'll go back for the second reading. But just wanted you to have a heads up, so if you see it on a council agenda, you'll say, huh, didn't that just happen?
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And item 7.2.
Just wanted to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We really appreciate you volunteering for this commission and all the hard work that you do. And I would also like to give you a heads up that probably in January or February, you're going to start seeing public hearings for the Crossroads West project. And I know you're all at home just sitting up at night with that EIR. So you might want to kind of refresh your memory because there'll be a lot coming down the road and having a basic understanding of that EIR will really help you through the next materials that you'll receive.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Well, German, can I have a motion to adjourn? Can you do it the right way? Rules of order.
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Now, please, you have to have a cupcake or you have to take one with you.
I will take one with.
Janet and I are going to bring 10 pounds each.
I had mine. It was great.
I'd like Christmas for this one. You don't want one for tomorrow? And please, from the audience too, if you would like something to drink or a cupcake, please. Help yourself, take one with you if you'd like. If you have a cupcake, take a couple. Okay.
That's what I'm doing because if she ever watches that video and my life span.